Good evening, I'd like to call and order this regular meeting at Round Lake Area School District Board of Education on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven thirty-one P M in the John T. McGee Middle School cafeteria. If I can get started, let's have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Kinglet?
Yeah.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Lee? Mr. Francisco?
Here.
Mrs. McGinnity?
Here.
Mr. Duver?
Here.
Mr. Jewitt?
Here.
Thank you, and next up is our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in the soul of liberty and justice.
All right, first up is approval of meeting agenda. Do you have one slight adjustment to the agenda? We can give approval to move up number nine, introduction of administration. We're going to put that right after, right after the meeting agenda approval and report communications to the board. Assuming we have no objections to that, if I can get a motion to the amended meeting agenda.
So.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, second by Ms. Lee. Roll call, please.
Mrs. McGinnity?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Duver?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kinglet?
Yes.
Motion carries, and so next up is the introduction of administration.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Mendoza, peers, and community. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce to you to our new Assistant Principal, Brittany Howard, Mrs. Brittany Howard. A little bit about Brittany, she has a family first, as you notice if you look into the crowd, whereas she has much of her family with her. This evening joining us is Ramon Beth, her dad Ed, her brother Danny, who did his student teaching here and is now in his first year at Lakes High School. It is her husband Jason, and then her three kids, her four-year-old Jackson, two-year-old Emmett, and six-month-old Bella. So Brittany was nine years of education. Her most recent seven years have been in Kildare Ninety-Six, where she taught in those all middle school. She taught science, social studies, and the language arts. The only thing she didn't teach is math because she's not good at it. Her words. And most recently, she was slated to be a coach in Kildare until we spelled her L A to be Assistant Principal here. So super excited to have her. Her favorite things in science, spending time with her family, are going to concerts and music. She likes to drive around with the music as loud as she can so that she hears the music and not the screaming kids, right? So, Brittany.
Board, Dr. King, Dr. Mendoza, I would like to thank you guys so much for giving me this opportunity. I'm so extremely excited to be in District One Sixteen and here at McGee. In the almost two weeks that I've been here, it has been an amazing experience, and I am so excited for what the future holds for both me as an educator and for the school and for the community. So thank you again so much for this opportunity.
Mary, good evening, Board. I am incredibly blessed to be able to introduce you to Laura Strange. This is her fifteenth year in our district. Laura completed her undergrad in two thousand eight at Eastern Illinois University, majoring in early childhood special education. She completed a master's in reading through Concordia University in two thousand ten. Her ESL endorsement with Benedictine University in two thousand twelve. And in May of two thousand nineteen, she graduated again from Concordia from the principal preparation program. She's taught early childhood here at the EDC for eleven years. From there, she transitioned to our CNI specialist for special ed position. She's held that position for three years, and now she has become our elementary coordinator for special education. As a coordinator, Laura has some really high goals and a good vision for co-teaching and inclusive practices through coaching and careful planning, and she is outstanding at developing professional development. She also wants to work with our content coordinators to develop a spiraling curriculum for instructional classrooms to accommodate the needs of multi-grade classes. Laura lives in Bola with her husband Chad, her ten-year-old son Owen, seven-year-old daughter Lily, and their fourteen-year-old daughter Sammy. Laura enjoys baking, decorating cookies, bowling, and listening to podcasts, so let's welcome Laura.
I had to write it down because I knew I wouldn't remember everything. In two thousand eight, Round Lake took a chance with a brand-new grad and offered her a position as an early childhood special education teacher. Almost fifteen years later, I'm still here and forever grateful for the opportunity. Over the years, Round Lake has given me many opportunities to become a teacher leader, and most recently with the creation of the Curriculum and Instruction Specialist for Special Ed Position, thanks Susan, I was able to step into leadership outside the classroom. And now, in two thousand twenty-two, Round Lake took a chance again, and I'm so thankful for this opportunity, and I'm excited to continue my journey in Round Lake.
All right, not hearing any more of these lovely introductions. Next up is communications to the board, and our first one is our CNO government board.
All right, so we had a meeting in August. No, we have a meeting coming up in August. We had a meeting in July, which got bumped to July because none of the people showed up in June. That's very short. Couple of appointments happening there to the Executive Board, including Dr. Mendoza. They're very excited to have him joining them. We had a bunch of memorandum of understandings with the union over there, so things seem to be going well. However, if anybody out there knows of anybody who works in special ed land and is looking for a job, CNO is still always there for people. So until another week or two when we have our next meeting, that's what we know.
Any questions from Board? Thank you, Peggy. Next up is our A V position and live streaming of board meetings.
Good evening, Board. So tonight I would like to highlight a few areas of the memo that was put together and provide context and additional considerations for your consideration. So last school year, the district added an Esri-funded instructional technology slash audiovisual specialist position within the Teaching and Learning Department in order to provide key support for A V technologies across the district. This included live streaming, Zooms, Webcasts, et cetera, in the instructional education area. And the budget was for a period of two years. At the end of last school year, this past school year, that position was vacated. As a result in subsequent discussions, the administration is recommending and is moving forward with having that position moved to the I T department as a full-year position to support, again, key A V technologies that the district has expanded over the course of the recent, over the course of recent years, which will include the stadium scoreboard, the sound system, classroom A V technology, the new high school theater solution, as well as district-wide digital signage, and to include the Board of Education streaming solution, which currently is being handled by Mr. Craig Elbers. As a result, that position will also shift and have a flexible schedule for that position to be here for all board meetings in order to ensure they are streamed. The Board may remember that a year ago or so, we proposed a proposal to have stipend positions for folks to come in and actually do the streaming solution. We posted for four, ultimately only were able to hire three people into that position. They've sensed or relinquished that role and are not interested in pursuing it further, leaving out some zero. Mr. Craig Elbers couldn't consider it enough to fill in. However, Ms. Elbers is not making this a good issue at all, but the A V realm is a very specific skill set. There's sound considerations, video considerations, so it needs somebody who has that specific background in order to be able to provide that support the district needs. We've seen the Board has supported a number of projects investing in A V across districts, and we need to make sure we support that going forward. This position will do that. So I wanted to make sure the Board was aware it's shifting, will have support for this board streaming, but I wanted to also make sure the Board was aware of that. In recent conversations, I think I've heard that there's potential for expanding streaming to include committee meetings, and I wanted to cover those considerations for your fair consideration tonight. So given the fact that we originally, when we went into streaming, it was specific for the Board of Education meeting that we're a part of tonight. We invested, I think somewhere to the tune of sixty-four hundred dollars for the equipment that's here in front of us to stream the camera, the sound system, except the streaming solution. That was a one-time investment for one set of technology. If we looked to expand it, it may involve additional sets of equipment based on schedules for committee meetings. Please take that into consideration. Given the shortage of live operators, we couldn't get folks to come in and stream for the short period of time for the board meetings. We may have additional hard time getting people in for even shorter committee meetings, just making sure that you were aware of that. And since we do have currently one dedicated streaming solution, it may require adjustments in schedules for other meetings that happen to run concurrently if you wanted to stream them. So just take that into consideration as well. And then I also wanted to share with Ms. Bennet's help, the viewing streaming solution numbers over the course of the past year. I think outside of the February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two board meeting that was regarding masking protocols, where we had up to a hundred and twenty livestream viewers that joined real-time and roughly four hundred and thirty-seven reviews on the recording that was uploaded. We've been averaging somewhere between four and seven livestream attendees, and that's fine. Two or three of those are in the room currently, so some lots doing it. Just wanted to make sure we knew the numbers, I like numbers. And then, but then, those, those translated into about seventy-seven views after the recording was uploaded, just to give you that context. So I said a lot probably, and I can field any questions, but I just wanted to make sure and that you had information in front of you and respectfully ask you to discuss the likelihood of expanding live streaming to include committee meetings so that we could be prepared if that's the direction you chose to go.
Question I have is, and thank you for the very concise and the numbers, definitely due to justice for that justification as well. What are our options on recording the committee meetings and then posting them afterwards? Since, as you stated with the numbers, the post view is picking up, so at least being able to get that out, what kind of options do we have for that?
Great question, so I can just present something that comes to mind. So we can do what we're doing tonight, which is a livestream with having a camera or an iPad or some recording device record the meeting. The challenge, and Mr. Elbers will say this, others will say it when we discuss tonight's event, is sound, it's hard to pick up in this environment because it's not being directly fed into the camera. So it's really picking up what's coming out of the microphone system. So even when we post this recording after tonight, it'll be a little bit of a challenge. So in order to provide a better solution, we'd have to invest in better equipment. There's a couple of options where we can record a static view of the board that's being presented right now, and then whatever sound gets picked up, we can go forward with that. If we wanted to get into better quality, we'd have to invest in better technology.
Dan, would you, because I haven't asked you this, so I apologize. I just want the Board to know for tonight's meeting, by the way, thank you for being flexible with the venue and everything. I actually asked Dan to provide an iPad, because I thought it was simple, just hit the button, stand it on the tripod, go. Then he mentioned the sound issue, right? My question is, what kind of technical expertise would we need in the room if we did it in a committee? Would we have to have a filmer? Like somebody who, or would it, I'm not oversimplifying it, but if they had the, the community engagement meeting, would it be like how they're setting up a tripod and hitting play, or, I'm not, I just happen to use that.
More like, or like the whole Facebook Live?
So not to underscore it, it depends on what reliability we want. Can someone set up an iPad on a tripod and hit record? Yes. But at some point, are we committing to making sure that recording happens, the iPad doesn't run out of space? Like, at what level do we want to guarantee those get recorded? It will need probably an observer just to make sure it's going well and nothing goes off, you know, technology issues don't surface. So probably somebody there just oversee it. If we're comfortable just saying record and hope it works, that's a different level of expectation, right? So I'm sorry, I didn't answer your question, but my recommendation, even if we do the simple, literally low-budget option, we probably still want somebody to oversee it and make sure it's working.
We're, we're just looking for direction. So just, we, we can do whatever you want, we can make it work, and just, the administration's looking for the Board to have a discussion and give us direction on what you want to do.
And I'll step forward. I know I'm the one that kind of shepherded in trying to get the transparency out to at least get the recordings of, especially community engagement and finance. And I understand if it's, if the challenges are the challenges, but that's much as simple transparency.
The transparency was good, good enough before with the open invitation and, you know, having people come in. The advantage of going through COVID is it ended up giving us experience with some of the other tools and some of the other, yeah, the other programs and other tools. But if they're not going to serve us well, or it's not going to do it, then we should leave it and go back to what we can do.
I agree with that. I mean, I would say, you know, we do do the committee reports in the regular meeting. And I think both committees do a good job in reporting out. Those meetings aren't posted, and if we're having a hard enough time doing just the regular board meeting right now, it means to put an additional burden on administration. I could really hate to do that.
So I think you're hearing from the Board on that one that at this moment it'd be staying with the live streaming of the regular, with the regular agenda of board meetings and no expansion at all into the committee meetings.
Okay, and it seems like we have that position covered, and that position will be filled, and they'll be here to make sure this meeting continues to be streamed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is our website.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I put into the packet just a kind of a summary of what we've done for the summer, but last spring we had some conversations about the navigation of our current website and the difficulty that many were facing in locating some of the content, as well as some of our outdated information. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on where we are today and what's coming over the next couple of weeks. So on our homepage, the district homepage and all of our school homepages, you'll see in the top right-hand corner is the Family Engagement tab. So this is the centralized site that we've created to put everything that parents should be looking for, that could be looking for. So we have met with our building secretaries, we met with the Teaching and Learning team to do review this setup, and we'll continue to receive feedback from others to see how this can be made even better as we go throughout the school year. So up at the top, you'll see five different sections, our general school information, so a lot of our back-to-school information is under this tab, program resources, registration fees and transportation, parent involvement, and then our community resources page. So if you, sorry, left-hand. If you scroll down a little bit, we continue to have these buttons across the center of the page that take you to those links that are, like, some of our most common accessed areas. And then down at the bottom of the page, we've developed some F A Qs. So it's questions that we feel that parents might be asking with links to directly where they can find that information. And then up also at the top, under I would like to, we've built in some of those questions here, topics that parents might be looking for. And if you click those, it'll take you to that page of information. One of the other things that we're working on, and we've, if I go back to the district homepage, one thing that you'll notice is under our channels here, so we have a school board in our district, you have to scroll quite a bit on some of these. And then even when you get into our district offices and departments, it's a lot of links to find the information within those departments. So the, like, if we go to the Welcome Center, there's, no, sorry, some bad example, but if there's a registration page, you gotta click a few times to actually get there. So I actually met with Mary, probably a couple of months ago now. She had shared a recommendation, something that Waikiki is using with their structure, which we really like. They break out their academics and operations department, and when you see, if you hover over, it opens up these new tabs for you. So for example, under operations, it shows each of the departments that reports operations, and then those important links under each one of those sub-menus. So we, last month, I think it was, the Board approved an agreement with Blackboard for them to do the back-end design of that, and they're still in the process, so I hear that by next Tuesday, they should have that design work complete. And then I'll, we'll give ourselves another four to five days to get all of the pages updated where we want them to be with this new design. So instead of scrolling through here, we'll have those broken out. So we'll have the superintendent, Board of Education, academics, operations, with those sub-menus that we just showed as Waikiki as an example. So any questions that you have?
I do have a question, because I was kind of, you know, going through here. Where, where, like, especially under family and community engagement, like, to get to the P T Os and the athletic and fine arts boosters.
So under parent involvement, we have our parent booster groups, which should take us to our, the high school accounts right now for the athletics and fine arts. The P T Os, they still, we need to get those rolling again at the elementarys and middle. So once those are established and through the parent partnership program that we're working on, rolling out this year, those will be updated as well.
The other question, I do, I like the F A Qs. Is it a quicker way to put some of the calendars on there for parents, the school calendar?
Meaning adding it to the F A Qs here?
Maybe, or so it's more prominent on our website. I know it's on our website, it's just not a quick clip, like, I can't go to our website and like, okay, there's a school calendar, maybe I'm planning whatever. What are their days off? Where, you know, it's all that.
Yeah, so right now on our district site, it is one of those buttons, but we'll change this on the family engagement site to include one of those buttons as a calendar.
I just think it'd be, you know, as family engagement, community engagement, like, the school calendar should be there too.
Do they have also a new school calendar? Is it all of the events that are happening in the school district all together?
So each school, so the district has their own calendar, and then each web, or each school also has their own website calendar. So you would need to, from the website anyway, toggle between the two, or between the schools to see what their events are. However, on our district app, there is a feature there that you can subscribe to all of our schools, or a few of them, and then you can see all the calendar of events on your, on your app.
Heather, how can we get to the family resource?
So on the homepage of the district website and on each of the schools, up in the top right-hand corner is the Family Engagement tab. There's Family Engagement, Staff, and then our COVID dashboard. Are you looking at it on your phone?
Yeah, because when I was looking at the tablet earlier, it was kind of, it was much easier to see it on the computer, and then when I brought it on the tablet, it was kind of, it was hard to navigate, so I was just trying to, a lot of things.
We'll take a look at that too, how it's responsive on other devices.
The one thing I would say, which I think it's cool that each of the schools have their own calendar, and I think it's cool that, you know, within the app, you can subscribe and subscribe. It'd be nice if the district calendar, because I'm, I'm looking at it right now, and it looks like everything is on there, but not everything is on there for all the schools. It'd be nice, because to have them, like, color-coded, like, you know, all the blues are this, you know, school or whatnot. Because it'd be, you know, for those who have multiple students and, you know, just that and whatnot, instead of having to subscribe to things.
Yeah, the way we have it set up right now, they have the ability to push information to the district calendar, so if that is of interest, we can definitely do that easily. Right now, what you'll see on the district calendar are the start of school, like, the meet and greets and the first days of school. So like today, Village is showing on the district calendar. Traditionally, we've just done those, like, what's impacting the whole district on the district calendar, but we definitely be open to changing that process.
How does the Board feel about that? Because that's, I want to make sure if we're going to do this, that that's something all of you, there's consensus, rather.
You're talking about a holistic calendar?
Yeah, it sounds like there's a feature that allows the buildings to push to the district calendar, correct? We can do that, I just want to make sure that that's something you want.
Well, I remember there was a time we did do that, so that way the calendar was all-inclusive of us being a unit district. I know COVID and things have, you know, kind of changed some things that have happened. As a unit district, and it's like, you know, Ms. Larson said, you have a kid at Murphy, McGee, and the high school. You don't necessarily want to toggle between all the schools, like, okay, wait, I gotta be here at Murphy at this day, and I gotta be around at McGee, and then the high school. As a parent, it would be nice to look at, on Wednesday, I see the three schools my kids are in, they all have events. Maybe I gotta clear a bit of feedback on that from the parent, saying that that would be easier, so I think it could be beneficial.
Heather, just because I can't think of it, is there downside to doing that?
Yes.
But it's very busy, it's very.
So it's great to see the things you want to see, but there's times when.
So it's great to see the things you want to see, but there's times when, just think about managing our own personal calendar. If you got your calendar and then you've got everybody else's calendar as well, that's where it becomes, if it's too busy, then it's not useful.
Right, and apparently...
That's a good point, yeah, that's a good point. But how, how do we make it useful? Because I do see, I mean, I have, you know, like, I gotta be at Murphy, I have McGee, and I gotta be around like high school.
Heather, just sort of...
It's a valid point, absolutely.
It's like our personal calendar, right? I want to see what I want to see, but I don't want to see what I don't want to see. So is there a way, is there a way to...
To Mr. Jones' point, you were stating that we have the individual subscriptions where you can put to Google Calendar, so to that point, you can choose which calendars you bring to your own calendar. But I think overall, one calendar could rule them all, to use the Lord of the Rings, Parlance, will still be there as, as that one resource, but then still have the ability to be able to pick and choose the calendar. It, it, it sounds like we already have that.
So on the app, you can subscribe to the different calendars. I need to check into some different options on the website, because as it is right now, I don't believe you can download from the website to your Google Calendar, unless I've forgotten over time, but I'm pretty sure you can.
I guess with the app, you know, you can from the website, because I remember I've done it. But I'll get it from online. Maybe then it becomes informing our families how they can do that, how they can import three schools I'm interested in versus the three schools they're gonna be interested in. Maybe it's just an education piece we need to teach our families and not, you know, cloud up the whole district calendar.
Well, I'm also thinking from the perspective, if this parent group wants to do something for this building, do they then need to search through all the different schools' calendars, plan it to make sure they're not over planning on somebody else's thing? You know what I'm saying? So that's why I was wondering, having everybody have like one district, one, for them to be able to, I just run it out there.
So we can, want to, if it's okay with the board, we can get more information and bring it back. Outside of the calendar function, is there, are you generally happy with what we've done? And then obviously, the hovering feature, we still need to work on. I think Heather and her team has done a really good job of trying to be responsive. I just want to make sure that we're headed in the right direction.
There's also one more piece I just wanted to mention with our webmasters this year. We have quite a few new individuals. Katie Holland, our digital media specialist, has put together a monthly checklist for each of them, so it gives them ideas for posting for the month, things that are coming up that they definitely don't want to forget about posting, both to the website and social media. So those are some tools that we've put in place for the team this year, so that, hopefully that will help us alleviate any of the outdated information that we've seen on the website in the past.
I, I think it's, it's great. I mean, our website has really evolved from even three years ago what we have, so I appreciate all the work you guys are putting into it.
I think the branding is flipped, I think it looks good. The family engagement site, I thought was really, I thought was really comprehensive, so it makes more...
I think it's a much more precise one.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. All right, next up is our early childhood construction and preschool prevention initiative grants.
So this is memo, just sharing with the board that we are looking to expand our preschool for all grant and rent initiative grants. Rent initiative is the birthday free program. We currently have 60 families, we're thinking we'd like to expand to 80 families. And then preschool for all, we have approximately 320 students enrolled at present, fluctuates a little bit, looking to expand to about 500. Of course, that requires additional space. So the state of Illinois with the capital development board has put out a grant opportunity for, that would cover renovation or construction, to return sort of the backside of the preschool building. Currently, the ASC is a classroom, so we could expand. So we're pursuing opportunities to grow in those areas and also that construction grant.
Yeah, just to be clear, we're not fully committing to expanding, because if you read the memo, we're eligible for up to $10 million of construction, renovation, or leasing. And then it obviously, we have to staff it. We have the, the programming piece is the reoccurring expenditure, and it's not bad to criticism or bad, but because of the needs of our early childhood learners, those programs typically run with lower class sizes, there's more support staff needed. But we, we're in the position, we're going to apply and then assess and analyze as part of our budget development process to see how we're gonna fund it. And there might be some other funding opportunities, I don't want to get into all the details now, but I think we're doing the prudent thing by applying, because we can always say after, you know, can't pull it off, so we're gonna pull back. But the other thing is there's dependency. So if we do this, where do the people at the central office go? And on, and on, and on. So there's a bunch of moving parts. I'll be sharing more with the board later about some of these things, but I just want to credit Susan and her team. Janie Metzger has done an exceptional job in our EDC. I'll be talking about celebration during the superintendent's report. So we, we know that early childhood learning is a priority for us, and if we can intervene earlier and provide support, those early childhood students will be in first grade, second grade, third grade, and on and on. So just wanted to make the board aware that we're moving forward with the application process. Dr. Center, October 1 is the deadline-ish, correct?
Ah, October 10th, yep.
October 10th, I'm sorry, for the construction piece?
For the construction.
And then you find out early December-ish, correct?
Correct.
Certainly will entertain questions.
Does any of that click any of the boxes for the overall, aren't, I don't know what to call it, the overall plans for the, I can't tell them.
You know, the, like, large-scale strategic initiatives?
Oh my goodness, thank you.
Yes, I mean, this isn't, I could be, please correct me, Dr. Center, this isn't, some of the things we're looking at with the tenant centers, this isn't directly tied to that, necessarily.
Correct, because it's a separate location.
Correct, separate location, but if, I think the board is aware, we've got the welcome center, where Cedar Lake Road is gonna go right through the welcome center, we're bringing our kids back from Klebeak. If we do this, we have to figure out a location for the central office. We have expanded our transition center, so I'll talk more about that later, which is great, but we've had to find a location for them, so it's a little too neat. We're decreasing in enrollment, but we're still running into space issues, so yeah, it is part of it.
It is one of the ones that we recorded out in the December report.
All right, next up is the FOIA report. Any questions from the board in regards to the information contained therein? Hearing none there, next up. Next up on that is contracts under 1,000. Any questions on that? Looks like we had a couple of zero-dollar questions.
Yeah, the, our zero-dollar contracts, I just wanted to confirm that the NIU listed is the NIU Northern Illinois University. It's an NAMF, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware.
Not Northern Indiana.
Or Iowa.
Northern Indiana.
It's Northern Illinois University.
No, yeah, that's what it's clarified. I'm sorry, yeah, we were joking here, sorry. I'm gonna pull it up and answer. I was confirming it's Northern Illinois.
All right. Hearing no other questions on that. Next up is public comment. As always, members of the public may participate in public comment during regular meetings by electronic public comment, as well as by attending in person and speaking directly to us. Electronic public comments, we accept them until 12 p.m., they have a regular scheduled meeting, and the public commenter will be contacted to confirm identity. Once confirmed, the electronic public comment will provide all board members in written form. A link to the electronic public comment forum can be found in the board packets. Having not seen any electronic public comment today, we will then ask, is there any public public comment? Hearing none on this app? Oh, yes, come on up. Thank you.
I know, I know, but I apologize for that.
No, you're, you're good, thank you.
Well, just gonna hold this one on.
Okay, my name is Jesus Rofaldo. I'm a parent of two kids, one of them, she just started kindergarten, she was so excited. My, my other kid, he started middle school, I don't know, he's gonna start high school. So he was so excited too. And my main concern is that there recently, I talked to high, high school students that they went to college, and I mean, they explained to me that our high school didn't prepare them for college. And I mean, hearing from them that they over experienced college, I mean, I want you to let you know that, I mean, we need to do something about it. What they told me is that, I mean, the issue is that we give them so many chances in high school, that they get a, a lack of doing the work. So when they get to college, they think they're gonna get away with that, and it's completely different. So we need to push a little hard on high school, just to let them be prepared for college. I know, we, we were in a pandemic, but now we gotta push them to, to go back to normal. And my other concern is that I'm working with around the community, so I have seen middle schoolers now with cigars of marijuana. And I mean, for me to see that, it hurts. I don't want to see kids doing that stuff too early. I mean, they got so many opportunities that they can do, and I mean, what we can do to help them out? That's my main concern on my community, on the schools, and I can help as much as I can. I mean, I'm trying, and I'm willing to help more. Thank you.
All right, hearing no other public comment, now, next up is the superintendent's report, Dr. Rendoson.
Yeah, so I am very, I think the timing on this, given the public comment, is perfect on one of these, but a lot of positive information to share. First, I want to congratulate the early childhood preschool for all program. Our early childhood program got recognized by the Illinois State Board with the designation of the Circle of Quality with Accelerate Illinois. Accelerate is the state's quality recognition and improvement system for early learning and development programs. Accelerate unifies all of the state's early, early learning programs under a common set of standards across multiple settings to provide families with important information about quality early learning programs in their community. Like to thank our staff and administration who continue to support such an outstanding program for children and families. I do want to call out Janie Metzger and the teaching and learning team, more than any other principal in the district. She has to deal with more compliance than all of them probably combined, because her program is, is grant-funded. And I mean, Susan, you would agree with that. I mean, she is on top of it. The reason we got this circle of quality is because she actually questioned some things that they did during our audit last year, rightly so, and they actually made some changes based on her feedback, because they were doing the audit, you remember what last year was like. We had kids spaced out, some of the supplies in the classroom weren't where they normally are, because we were trying to keep kids safe. But just really credit to her, the teaching and learning team. I do want to, again, this is really a reflection of the teaching and learning team as well, and it, and it kind of speaks to our proactive approach to preparing kids for the workforce in college. I'm pleased to announce that I was asked to represent the district in front of the Illinois State Board Policy Committee just last Wednesday, recently to share successes, challenges, and additional information with the Illinois State Board's Policy Committee specific to our competency-based education experiences in Round Lake. We were one of the first 10 districts in the state to apply for the competency-based pilot. Please remember that, again, we were one of the first 10 districts. The policy committee is actually making a recommendation two days from now, I will be at that meeting as well, to give the same presentation. They're gonna be recommending a three-year extension of the pilot, which we are thrilled about, which will include a comprehensive evaluation of success for participating districts. We were specifically asked to present Round Lake. I'm also gonna be attending the full board meeting as indicated Wednesday, and just to represent the district, I want to thank the teaching and learning team for the work that they continue to do in that area. And additionally, at the same meeting, the SUCRIT group asked us to present regarding a learning initiative connected to college and workforce readiness. It'll be in front of the full board, Illinois State Board, and we're gonna be represented, connected to an initiative called One Goal, which is designed to assess, evaluate, and create implementation plans specific to college and workforce readiness initiatives. We served as a pilot district for One Goal at no expense. I want to, again, acknowledge the work of the teaching and learning team led by Dr. Center, as well as the leadership team at the high school, for continuing to be proactive and innovative, specific to the analysis and implementation of research-based approaches that improve student outcomes. I will say, with the One Goal initiative, our department chair of counseling, Sarah Schaefer, how long has she been in the district? 15 years, maybe? She, I say this respectfully, whenever we have a third-party consultant come in to provide feedback, it's not always, I feel like we have really good people and really smart people, and a lot of times, we know more than the consultant does, to be frank. But I do feel like the feedback I got from Dr. Rowling, Dan Nicholas, the associate principal, and Sarah, they really spelt value in this One Goal initiative. It's really designed to make sure that our, our college and workforce readiness programs are aligned to best practice, and they felt it was benefit having another set of eyes come in, and it wasn't like an oversight process, it was a partnership. So we've, we're gonna be presenting in front of the Illinois State Board again, which I think is great for the district. I'm just, I just happen to be the one presenting, but it's really Dr. Center and her team for continuing to look at innovative ways to, to do the good things that we have for kids. I'm pleased to announce that the district received $1.5 million more, dollars more in evidence-based funding for the FY 2223 school year. There are likely two scenarios that contributed to this. First, a miscalculation was made from the 1819 year, you may remember this, in the amount of roughly $900,000, which we received toward the end of the, end of last year. That will be included in our base funding minimum moving forward. And second, the city of Chicago moved into tier-two status. Tier one is the lowest-funded tier, receives a larger proportion of the allocated dollars, which reduced the CPS allocation and was redistributed, same pot of money. The largest district in the state got less, more money distributed elsewhere. Round Lake continues to remain in tier one at a 67% adequacy level. In order to get to 100% funded, I think the gap right now is about 25 million, just so you're aware. I know, it's, it's my mind. Another positive, the high school hosted a full-day ninth-grade orientation for students today. We're pleased to report that 88% of our incoming freshmen attended today's event. I happened to see Ms. Schaefer at about 5 o'clock today, and she said it's the large, it's the best turnout in the district since she's been here, so that's 15 years, probably. So we had a great turnout for freshman orientation. Also want to inform the board and confirm our following athletics sponsorships. AudioWorks Intens, which is an elite level, Meyer, an elite level, Life Touch, Panther level. AudioWorks Intens, which is an elite level, Meyer, an elite level, Life Touch, Panther level, Organic Life Panther level, Farmers Insurance, Sofia Perez Panther level, District One, Blue Level, and State Bank of the Lakes Maze Level. Also want to call up the following donations received since late last spring and into the school year. Arby's Free Food Certificates to Beach, Chuck E. Cheese, Gurnee, 25 pizzas to Beach. Arby's 500 coupons for five free kids' meals to Beach. Annie Adamski and Corey Case Art Portfolios, District 116, K through 12, Art Department. Tom Gradowski Bass Fishing Supplies for the Bass Fishing Team here at the high school. Aaron Quarles, a drum set, Indian Hill Music. The Gore Family Foundation, which is a fantastic partnering, continues to be. $10,000 for Panther Crew at the high school. That's our student mentoring program. $6,000 for Web, which is the middle school version of Panther Crew for John T. McGee Middle School and Round Lake Middle School. The Clausen Family, three scholarships at $1,000 each for Round Lake High School graduates. New Hope Christian Community Church for 500 backpacks that they graciously supplied our elementary age students. And last, the Great Lakes Credit Union, four supply-filled backpacks for Beach. So a lot of really positive information during the update tonight. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Dr. Mendoza. Any questions for Dr. Mendoza on that great recap? Hearing none. Turn it over to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee update.
All right. Good evening. Yes, finance met earlier today. And because the board is still on our summer schedule, most of the items on the finance agenda you will see on the regular agenda. But this is the end of our summer schedule. So we'll be back to regular programming next month. So I'll go over just the few items that are only on the finance agenda uh, in the rate, uh, update right now. And then as we go through our regular agenda, I'll report out on those items that were in finance that are becoming up for motion later. Uh, so there's two items on the finance agenda that I did want to go over with the board. Um, as you know, our new athletic director has found opportunities, again, for us to make, take advantage of programs we have in-house by bringing in, it's a BSN Rewards Plan. Uh, BSN is the spirit wear that most of our athletic programs use to sell their spirit wear. So if you see recently, they pushed out, follow the selling their spirit wear. If you click on that link, it's BSN. Uh, soon with that, there'll be sign-on money, marketing money. And then with $50,000 plus in spending, we get 10% of that back. It is a five-year agreement. Um, with that money coming in, it's less money that they have to use in athletics to buy equipment and, and uniforms and that kind of stuff. So I'm very happy to see that, that's being taken advantage of. Um, the high school theater sound system, as you know, we've reported out on that for a while. So we'll be coordinating a field trip so the board can hear the new sound system. Uh, so in September, I just, it'll be an agenda item so that we can go hear the new sound system. So, yeah, yes. Uh, so, you know, thank you to Dan and the team and, you know, Chrissy, everybody. We know it was a lot of work, but I, I'm sure the students and the fine arts will be very excited with that new sound system. Um, of course, I always encourage the board to look at the treasures report. Um, you know, again, just thank you to Dr. Kibbins for finding, and you'll hear about those again. We go with fiscal 23 budget, those opportunities to make money off our money and, and the opportunity she's found for the district. Um, so again, all the other items I will touch on as we go through the agenda. Mr. Devera, would you like to come on to add? Yes, we're good.
Excellent. Any questions at all for the board and Finance?
All right, we'll go to minutes. Need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 18th, 2022, regular board meeting.
Second. Motion by Ms. Lee, seconded by Mr. Jewett. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Larson?
I'm staying.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
And motion carries.
All right, we move on to the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda for the accounts payable, payable report for $2,141,79.92. The previous motions report for $3,151,176.67. July 2022 treasures report, the July 2022 P-card report, and the August 15th, 2022 employment report.
So moved. Second. Motion by Mr. Jewett, seconded by Mr. Devera. Roll call, please.
Mrs. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next up, we're to the old business, and this is the Board Superintendent Communication expectation. Um, hopefully got a chance to review it. I know, um, and that was able to send to myself, Dr. Mendoza, and Heather uh, some wording clarifications, which I think we're going to try and, if possible, let's get it out to the rest of the board, her clarifications. Because I thought they were all spot on. Did anybody else have any additional questions, concerns, revisions to what they saw?
Our intent would be to send out the red line version to you before the next meeting. And then if you're agreeable to it, I mean, we can, we'll put an end for approval. Do you want to just briefly talk about the essence of some of the recommendations you made?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, in, in reviewing the board agreement for social media use, uh, just based, I mean, personal experience and tenure of, as long as you guys know, I've been on this board. I've had some experience with that. Of course, social media has as much expanded, you know, over the years. Um, I, as you'll see, as, as Dr. Mendoza and Mr. Francisco said, they'll send out what I had submitted, uh, what I think are additions to and just clarifications on certain, uh, the points as you saw in what's in your packet. Uh, you know, I did talk to Mr. Francisco regarding it. I just think it's good clarification and just further delineation of what we needed for that agreement.
So we can actually get that out to you, um, in the weekly this Friday?
I'm sorry, just, just to further add, just, um, this agreement is not just for this board, but it's also intended for future boards. Because as we know, the makeup of the board can always evolve.
Any other questions or concerns? All right, then, yep, we'll get the red line out and next meeting we will work to go to approval. And that'll bring us to new business.
All right. Um, I need a motion to approve a 1.0 FTE Temporary Certified Nursing Assistant in the amount of $48,000. So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Devera, seconded by Mr. Francisco. Of course, this one was through Finance.
Yes. Um, as we mentioned, I'll go through these items that are on our agenda for approval that have gone through Finance. Um, as you noted in the motion, it's Temporary Certified Nursing Assistant. Again, in our early childhood, uh, we're still seeing some of the ramifications of the pandemic and students, um, being out of, of the buildings. Uh, so that's why this is temporary.
All right, hearing no others. All right, then roll call.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the addition of 1.0 FTE teacher at PDBF School for $80,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Devera, seconded by Ms. Klingler. Fine.
Yes. Um, um, again, this was at Finance. Um, the enrollment, uh, 33 available, um, for general education. We have 42 students, um, in the registration process, obviously. Uh, just for clarification, our enrollment or contract is 29 students per classroom. Uh, so we need additional teacher. We did ask and bring up regarding our projections on enrollment, uh, you know, for reviewing those and how that's working. So Dr. and, and talking with Finance, uh, Dr. Mendoza, they're going to bring that forward and how that's being reviewed and how that's affecting those staffing requests.
I'm also, I'm assuming that we're going to be brought forward if it's going to affect anything when it comes to class sizes. Because I know we talked about the downward trajectory and that some of that is we're bringing kindergarten early back into the district, so.
Right. As we, you know, we mentioned, um, because we're supposed to see that downward in enrollment. But obviously, that's not what we're seeing here. Again, how is that affecting and where are we, what really is the trend that we're seeing? Again, projections aren't projections, but what are we actually seeing in enrollment?
Thank you. Hearing no other questions. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. McInley?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
And motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the Thompson Reuters Clear Contract in the amount of $15,900.
So moved. Second. Motion by Mr. Jewett, seconded by Mr. Devera.
And, and again, this was on the Finance Agenda. This is a multi-year contract. Uh, for clarification, this contract is what our district uses for residency verification. Um, and in talking with, uh, Dr. Afgar without giving real specifics, um, this has been a benefit to the district so that, again, people who live in our district are, is, you know, who is attending and, you know, we have, uses for our benefit that people who are, shouldn't be attending our district are not, and it's paid for itself, making sure that we have our residents that we're supporting.
I have a question about this. There's like, how do we do compliance in and around this?
What compliance specifically?
Specifically, are we required to do this?
Are we required? No, we're not required, but it, you know, just says with any district. We want to make sure the students that are registered within our district are the ones we're servicing.
Just to put it in perspective, our operating per pupil expenditure is over 10,000 a year. Um, we have not historically, some districts actually have full-time employees that monitor and are out driving in the community park in front of houses, making sure the kids are supposed to attend. We don't have that. Um, without question, last year, this more than paid, uh, for itself because we were notified, alerted, from that point in, Dr. Afgar will investigate. And we, and we treat people with dignity and respect. I mean, we're not trying to go after people. But frankly, it's, I mean, you know, two students, $20,000, it starts to add up. And we do have, sometimes our people in the community aren't living in the bounties here and they shouldn't be going to school here, so.
Any other clarification?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the multi-year contract with Harris Solutions for McReel Administers Evaluation Software Tool in the amount of $29,755.44.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Klingler, seconded by Ms. Lee.
Again, this is a two-year contract. Uh, this is what our Human Resources Department uses, um, for, as it says, an evaluation tool.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. McInley?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the NHFS Network Licensing Renewal, Plan Renewal, uh, and authorize the administration to execute all required documents in the amount of $4,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Francisco, seconded by Mr. Jewett. And I know Finance will talk about, uh, for the NFHS. That's, uh, just as a reminder, that's being able to provide it for our home events.
Yes. So again, this, um, you know, we just started over the pandemic where that we, um, families can view games and anything helpful, not just games, anything held within the stadium and anything in the main gym. Uh, again, that's some of the things that what we discussed at the finance meeting. Uh, is one, um, you know, as Mrs. Beddow went over, the redesign of the website, making it easier for parents and families to click on that link so that they can watch those events. I know, um, you know, I've heard it's, it's harder for grandparents to dig through the layers of our website to click on it. Um, also, um, making sure, if, in case some of you aren't aware, we do have some Thursday games this year. So that's a change, um, for our families, making sure that they're aware. And then, um, not everyone in our, for our families, we make it free to view any of our home games. That is not the case for some of the other schools in our conference. Uh, so, you know, I don't want to go to a waking, but I want to be able to watch it from the comfort of my home. Depending on what school we're at, I may not be able to watch it unless I pay the monthly or the yearly subscription. So again, making sure our families are aware of what those schools are upfront. And then, uh, just the last thing the administration had brought up in discussion with this is, you know, maybe there's another platform we could use for this. But since so we have it for this year, we'll stick with NHFS.
Hearing nothing else, we will go to roll call, please.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. McInley?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
And motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the partnership, continued partnership with IRC, uh, the Illinois Resource Center in the amount of $74,925.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Devera, seconded by Ms. Lee.
And again, this, the finance meeting, this is, um, PD Professional Development uh, for our Spanish literacy at kindergarten. Uh, again, this started over the pandemic as well, but it was all virtual. So this will be the first year we'll be able to have it, um, in person. And this is funded and paid for out of Title III grant dollars.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
And motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the RLHS Accompanist Independent Contract Agreement for Mr. Josh Langhoff for the 2022-2023 school year in the amount of $4,200.
So moved. Second. Motion by Mr. Jewett, seconded by Mr. Devera. Motion by Mr. Jewitt, second by Mr. Rivera.
So this is for the pianist who accompanies all our choral and band concerts. Again, we use them multiple years, you know, over a decade, so, again, it's on the building budget from the high school.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnity?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 tentative budget as presented and approve the public hearing date for Monday, September 19th, 2022, at 6:55 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Francisco, second by Ms. Kline.
And again, over this in finance, you know, again, Dr. Kibbins does a great job. A couple of things I just wanted to point out, we're at 31% free for our tax, property tax collection. That is a little lower than where we're usually at, but again, we are in a bit of, you know, financials with our community and just in general. The other thing, you'll see, there's $800,000 earmarked for capital, capital projects that is for Murphy, Murphy School repaying.
Do we anticipate that going down if people dispute their taxes?
Well, of course, if they dispute, and I know, you know, as Dr. Kibbins mentioned, we have, our next tax period is September. So we're always a little behind in actually seeing those. We are seeing a little higher rate of foreclosures as well. So it's just something we have to watch and stay abreast of. Do you want to add something else?
Roll call, please.
Mrs. McGinnity?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the independent contract agreement with the speech pathologist in the amount of $87,675.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, second by Ms. Lee.
Again, as you know, it's an independent contract. Obviously, and the new administration has talked about the shortage in speech pathologist. So this is again, to make sure that we keep those in the district, because we're having a hard time finding those physicians.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnity?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Need a motion to approve 2.0 middle school athletic director stipends to be placed for the extracurricular athletic schedule at a group of five in the collective bargaining agreement at a total cost of $12,996 for the 2022-2023 school year.
So moved. Second. Motion by Mr. Francisco, second by Ms. Rivera.
Um, yeah, probably, when we say middle school athletic director, that might be a little misleading. They are, well, they are athletic directors. We're not hiring two additional athletic directors. These are stipend positions that teachers will be able to apply for. One, they can also get experience at that next level. But this is for individuals in both two and permanent schools where they will help the AP, because most of this relies, is that size, under the assistant principal for each respective building, that will do the day-to-day activities like the scheduling, coordination of games, buses, you know, equipment, that kind of stuff. This will work in hand with their respective AP and with our high school athletic director. We did mention and bring up, again, having that holistic approach to athletics as a unit district, elementary, middle school, and high school. Again, it is, our AP has been here maybe a month, maybe a month and a half, so it is on his radar. But we do think this will help us also. We know that our APs in each building also have other responsibilities and things to do. So the scheduling of games and some of the administrative tasks.
And then, oh, sorry.
Those are the issues.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. Our middle schools are the only two middle schools in our conference that do not have these stipend positions. Every other middle school in our conference has a stipended athletic director set up that way. In addition to everything that Annette talked about, they also have to handle the coordination of officials for all the games, for all those middle school games, the whole nine yards.
Yeah, we, we used to have, a while ago, long before, but we had coordinators, athletic coordinators, but we got rid of those positions a long time ago. The last thing, we did ask the administration to kind of bring this back and how this is effectively helping our athletics.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnity?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the three-year contract for the E2020 credit recovery program through the Imagine Learning in the amount of $30,000 per year for a total of $90,000.
So moved. Second. Motion by Ms. Kline, or second by Mr. Rivera.
So again, we're going to work this in finance. I think everyone knows of the E2020, the credit recovery program that we use for our students at the high school to get them on track. Again, this is a multi-year contract for that credit recovery program. This will be reviewed and, you know, the annual review that we do of all the contracts we're teaching and learning.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Francisco?
Yep.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnity?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the addition of 6.0 FTE classroom monitor teaching assistants at an estimated of $58,000 each for a total of $348,000 to be funded through the ESAR funding.
So moved. Second. Motion by Ms. Kline, or second by Mr. Jewitt.
So again, this was at finance. As most know, there's a teacher shortage, and we brought our sub program back in-house. This is primarily for elementary, middle school, and high school. It is easier to kind of shuffle people around if a sub is needed because of how, you know, a period where elementary, it's not. So they're primarily will be for elementary, but of course, it will be for the district. So these six individuals will, you see their assignments daily and where they are needed. So that we have kind of in-house people or subs for the district. And then, we did ask the administration to report on how this is using, because again, this is funded through ESAR this year, and with bringing this back in-house, how this might move forward in subsequent years.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. McGinnity?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is discussion of first reading of board policy.
Any questions on what was in the pact in regards to first reading? Anything would, would you like clarification on? Was there anything that you weren't really want to highlight that seemed very stock? All right, hearing nothing there, we will move now to positive occurrences. I'll, I'll start out with, with a quick list. I was able to get to the McGee Open House, which was absolutely great, seeing everybody in the building and being able to talk to everybody, see everybody. It was, especially for me, a little bit, a little bit of a culture shock for me, not having somebody in the building for the first time in seven years. So, but it was an amazing job there, and definitely to the administration staff, faculty. One of the things I heard multiple times from multiple parents was the gratefulness of having it set on separate days from the rest of the buildings so that if they have children in Village as well as in McGee, as well as in the high school, they were able to attend them instead of having to go. I got eight and a half minutes to be at McGee. So definitely a great job there, thank you all around. I'll leave athletic review. I was able to actually attend the ISB Trust Edge presentation down in Naperville back on Saturday, past Saturday, two Saturdays past. But an absolutely great presentation, and I know I always say it, when you get those opportunities to take those continuing educations, if you can fit in your schedule, you're definitely well worth it. It was a great, great class, talking about how to build trust, how to build a working relationship with the board, and how to be able to authentically present yourself and to be able to really use that in order to build what we need for our district, so. And then, last one that I'll touch on is the EEC Playground. Thank you, Annette, as well for coming to that. We were able to be there for the ribbon cutting on that, and it was, it's absolutely beautiful over there, the way open space, a lot of outdoor, a lot of outdoor classroom activity that we can do with that. So definitely thank you again for all the hard work, and thank you for the applications for the grants and the whole nine yards there.
You know, I just, just regenerating, you know, the EEC ribbon cutting, the playground looks, looks beautiful. So, you know, if you can stop over and see, you know, try to do that, it's a lot of work and time went into it, and I think, you know, we did a beautiful job. And then, I know everybody knows we have the high school open house. There's definitely a fresh buzz and feeling in the air over there, so very excited for the school year. And it's a positive future occurrence, you know, Friday, they have the athletic kickoff, so look forward to that.
It's been great to see all of the sports teams practicing as I've been here every day. I did kick my son out of bed this morning for freshman orientation. He made it. And then I did make it to the high school open house, and it really, there was just something different in the air. It was really, it was really great to see a lot of new faces and just to see everybody back again at the high school. It just was, it was really exciting.
No, I have to agree. It was, it was so nice to see the teachers in the light, so it seemed like a normal year. And that's the first time, I think, I could say that in a few years, so it's kind of delayed, but thank you for moving the meeting, by the way. I'm sorry if we were in committee, but it was very much appreciated.
Well, Ms. Kline, there's not going to be a big, big time. It was great seeing the band out front of the entrance door for, the band and guard were both out front playing as everyone came in for the freshman orientation this morning. So definitely a great job there as well.
Oh, I was just going to kind of reiterate everything, and also seeing the pictures from the teachers' first days back, seeing their smiles and seeing how excited they were, and then being back in the building today with following two kids' schedules tonight. So again, thank you for moving the meeting. Some of us needed to follow two different kids' schedules tonight. It was just so great to be able to talk to the teachers and be there and just, you know, kind of get to know them, rather than just watch their video. Because I can make it videos, I know a lot of the teachers can make it videos, so, you know, it's so nice to just be face to face.
Do you know the other thing on dad's, our social media, they've done a great job of pushing out, you know, the first day for kids in open houses. So just wanted to at least, at least, you know, it's been recognized and it is appreciated.
Anything else? Quiet over there. All right, next up is future agenda items. I'll start future agenda items with the potential that we need to have a conversation for next year's board calendar setup that August needs to be potentially, and I've opened that to the administration to give us direction as to what would be best for the administration. But drop August off of the summer schedule, so just have June and July on the summer schedule. And especially as we start, starting so much earlier in August than when I was in school and many of us were in school. It feels like August is really just a back in regular school month, so.
I mean, I can just tell you now, it probably would make it easier for the team. I know it's an extra meeting, but we have a lot of hiring, a lot of things to get approved at the start of the year, so, I mean, I'll certainly talk to the team this week. And then, if it's okay, I'll bring it back for the board's consideration.
Thank you.
I'd say, I, I don't have a problem that I know we've done in years past. I know COVID has probably kind of raised some of our recovery because our meeting schedule's been different. But in previous years, we talked about in July doing the, that's second evening in August, but I, I definitely see your point. I mean, I don't have a problem, have to go back to a regular programming in August.
And then, there were a couple others, I just want the board to know that I wrote down for future. I've got the athletic director position. So there's several things that I, I always make notes during the meeting, I'll make sure I bring those back.
We just sent my computer, we're putting the whole computer in. I got to find out what I'm going into closed session for, but for our video, this will bring us to the end of the open session. So thank you again for this evening for that. All right, I need a motion to go into closed session for discussion of minutes of meeting lawfully closed under the OMA whether for purposes approval by the body of the minutes of the semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated in section 2.06, filed by ICS 120/2C 21. Also, real estate matters to purchase or lease of real property for the use of public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired, filed by ICS 120/2C 5. And, oh, yeah. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance of the special specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body of legal counsel of the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint law against an employee, a specific individual who services an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer in the public body or against legal counsel for the public body in terms of validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee that is subject to the local government wage increase transparency act may not be closed and must be open to the public, filed by ICS 120/2C 1.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. You're looking up.
No.
So moved.
Second. Motion by that person, Mrs. Kline, or seconded by Mr. Jewitt. Roll call, please, I'm not even letting you have questions anymore.
Mrs. McGinnity?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera? Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries. We are in closed session, thank you all. We are in closed session, thank you all for attending online. We will see you next regularly scheduled meeting, which is in September, thank you.